City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, September 20th. We have roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Okaberg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
And Mayor Kuntz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation under God indivisible with every gene and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and we do not have any changes to the agenda so we'll look for motion to approve as presented. Motion to approve. A motion by Greg Schultz to approve the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Moving down to the next item as the mayor has a proclamation.
Thank you Les. It's always nice that we can celebrate a church in Oatana that has 150 years of service. So the proclamation reads, whereas Sacred Heart Church is celebrating 150 years of worshiping in the great community of Oatana. And whereas Father George Keeler obtained permission to offer Mass in the town hall in 1866. A new church was started in 1867 and was dedicated on Christmas Day in 1868. And whereas, the church faced a couple of challenges, being destroyed by fire in 1901 and again in 1922. But with the help of God and the congregation, a new church was built on the same footings and was dedicated on June 16, 1923. And whereas Sacred Heart Church continues to support Catholic education through St. Mary's School and in the past Marion High School and was the first church in the diocese to start a parish nursing program. Now therefore I, Thomas A. Kuntz, Mayor of the great city of Oatana hereby proclaim September 24, 2016 as Sacred Heart Catholic Church Day and I call upon all citizens of the great city of Oatana to help Sacred Heart Catholic Church celebrate its 150 years of proclaiming God's word and being faithful to their mission statement. Drawing our life from the Eucharist, the Sacred Heart Parish family will live the mission of Jesus Christ in prayer, faith, formation, and service dated this 20th day of September 2016.
Thank you.
And I have one other one. This is also Suicide Prevention Month and we didn't get the proclamation done during the week that it was, but we have a young lady that would love to give us a little insight into suicide prevention so please join us.
Hi. I was here last year and I just have a little speech that I prepared for you guys. I have a lot of numbers so I gave you guys some index cards so you might want to keep those handy. The numbers are 1, 12, 52, 365, 8,760, 525,600, and 31,536,000. Now what would you say if I told you all of these numbers were equal to 788,400? Seems a little weird, right? I suppose you would like me to provide you with some additional information. Well, what if I also told you that the first set of numbers that I gave you were also all equal to each other? Let's see. The first set of numbers are all related by time. One year is equal to 12 months, as it is equal to 52 weeks, as it is equal to 365 days, as it is equal to 8,760 hours, as that is equal to 525,600 minutes, as that is equal to 31,536,000 seconds. This is roughly how long it's been since I have spoken to you all since last year when the last proclamation for suicide prevention week was discussed. Now how are all of these numbers related to 788,400? In the last year, or 12 months, or 52 weeks, or 365 days, or 8,760 hours, or 525,600 minutes, or 31,536,000 seconds, 788,400 mothers or fathers, brothers or sisters, sons or daughters, family members or friends, adults or children, civilians or those who served have lost their battle with whatever it was that was weighing on their heart or their minds. Every 40 seconds an individual dies by suicide. I've given you a lot of numbers tonight, but 788,400 is the sole number I want to focus on right now. Before we proceed, I want to take a moment of silence to honor those that we have lost within the last year to suicide. Last year I came to as the sole content contributor of a blog that was just starting to build its foundation. This year I stand before you as the founder and CEO of a for-profit small business that is dedicated towards raising awareness about mental health, combating stigma, and decreasing suicide rates worldwide while promoting wellness, healing, and recovery as well as stimulating mental and emotional well-being. When the business launches next month on my birthday, 50% of the profit will be donated to a different mental health-related cause or charity every single month. After I attempted to take my own life in 2013, the reason I chose to stay and fight for life was so that I would have the opportunity to help others make that same decision. My small business, my small businesses' mission, goals, and standards are how I choose to honor those 788,400 individuals that we lost last year. But it is also how I'm actively working towards decreasing the number of lives that we will lose in the next seconds, minutes, hours, days, weeks, months, and years from now. Tonight, I'm not here on behalf of another proclamation but to continue raising awareness about this global epidemic. We are each one individual, but we have the ability to create, advocate, and inspire change and who knows how far each one of our individual ripples could go towards decreasing that 788,400 lives that we lose each year. In closing, I will leave you with this. I do not believe I am the best at anything, but I am very passionate about speaking. It is how I believe we can connect with others. It's how we can educate people and effectively help decrease stigma surrounding mental health and suicide. It's how we can use the small drop that we are to create a large ripple throughout our community, our state, our country, and even our world. We may at sometimes feel small ourselves, but so do those who are thinking about taking their lives and choosing to be a part of the community that aims to help those individuals find treatment and choose life is no small matter. So if we have not already, let us seek out creating our own ripples in the name of those 788,400. Thank you.
Thank you. Deacon. Here. Thank you very much, Deacon. And with that, we do move on to the next item, which is our financial report and I will ask councilmember Schultz to read it.
Okay. Total expenditures presented for approval tonight are as follows. Checks over $20,000 are $23,826 to Aspen Equipment Company for truck body and plow for wastewater treatment pickup, $29,925 to Businessware Solutions for server replacements, $87,765 to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for the quarterly workers' comp premium, $25,000 to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for the TUPs claim, and other expenditures of $174,935. Makes the total expenditures presented for approval tonight of $341,451.32.
Thank you Greg. What is the council's wishes?
Pay the bills.
You have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, license and permit requests, board and commission reports, et cetera, grouped into one motion. And what is the council's wishes here?
Les, if I might, I just wanted to point out on the minutes of September 6, we need to clarify the parcel. We had received a letter from Lowell Schultz questioning the assessed footage on his property so we just need to clarify that that property is excluded from that assessment role until that footage is verified. So just wanted to make sure that that is clarified in the minutes.
So that would be the clarification. We'll put it into the minutes of the meeting.
Yes.
So we were looking for approval with that correction to the minutes of the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So with that correction, what is the council's wishes here?
Motion to approve.
The motion to approve with that correction. Do we have a second by Jeff Okaberg? Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Thank you Chris for that correction. And with that, we move down to action items, which begin with 3.2.1, second reading of proposed ordinance, 916 to amend chapter 157, section 157 relating to the taproom and brew hubs. And this will go to Troy.
So this is the second reading of the proposed ordinance, which within the zoning ordinance, it defines brewer, brewery, brew pub, and brewer taproom, and then also classifies the brewery, brew pub, and brewer taproom as conditional use in the B2 and B3 district and then a permitted use in the I1 and I2 district. So staff would recommend approval of this ordinance change.
Thank you Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, this being ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. This has been approved. We move down to 3.2.2 is the second reading of proposed ordinance 10-16, amend chapter 113, alcoholic beverage to authorize license for taproom and brew hubs. And I'm going to mark.
Staff would recommend that we table this ordinance.
I've asked that that be tabled for two weeks so that I can tweak it to provide for the Sunday sales, the opportunity for Sunday sales we discussed two weeks ago.
Thank you very much.
I'm working on it.
And with that, we'll look for a motion to table. Motion to table. A motion by Kevin Rainey to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. All those in favor, on this being ordinance, we have to vote on a motion by individual.
Just table.
It's just a motion to table.
Just motion to table. Okay. All those in favor to table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been tabled for two weeks or as soon as we can get it back. Right? Mark? Okay. Moving on down to first reading of proposed ordinance 11-16, amend chapter 32-004, departments enumerated. And this we go to Chris.
Thank you Les. What we're doing here is a housekeeping item. It's necessary at this time to update our city code referencing our city departments. We wanted to reflect our current structure. This attached ordinance accomplishes that and staff would recommend approval of the first reading.
Thank you Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, this being our first reading, look for a roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
And Abraham.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
All right. This has been approved for the first reading and we will have the second reading in two weeks.
Yes.
With that, we move on down to resolutions 3.3.1, resolution 84-16, concur with OPU, approve amendment number one for agency agreement. And this will go to Mark.
Mayor, city council members, staff, thank you for giving me some time to get this resolution. I'm Mark Fritsch, General Manager, Oatana Public Utilities. And to give you some background information, we've had with SIMPA, the Southern Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, has had an agreement since the early 70s when they first started so it hasn't been changed since then. And agreements like that are really designed to make it very hard to be changed so you need to get quite a few different votes. We need like two-thirds of the representatives, two-thirds of the cities involved as well. For us to approve it from an Oatana Public Utilities, Oatana perspective, we not only need the Commission of Oatana Public Utilities to approve it, but also the city council as well. So we need that resolution to support the Commission for Oatana Public Utilities. So I'm here today to get that concurring resolution and it's really based on a couple things. One of them, things have changed over time since the original resolution was put in place and it was never really designed to invite project members in, first and foremost. So as we move forward with changes, we're members that want to be participants for all requirements, which means to purchase all their energy from the utility, we want to have the offer that we can have companies come in to participate on projects. For instance, if we're going to build another Oatana Energy Station too, they could participate as far as half ownership of that and be a project member and then have the ability to vote on things that have to do with their share of that project. And we didn't want them to be able to vote on things that didn't have their share of the project. So that's why we had the wording set up to do that, to open it up for project members, for the projects that they participate in, the opportunity to have a say on items that affect that project. And two, that if people of different cities weren't going to be members anymore, that they wouldn't be able to have the opportunity to vote on other items. And so that was one of the last things to clear up is today if one of the cities left, they'd still be a member. We didn't have that in our minutes to say, hey, they couldn't be a member anymore. And so those are the main ones to be cleaned up with the project. And we do have some changes, or I should say with the agency agreement. And we do have some members that have decided not to be members after 2029. And so that's why some other changes are coming in. Both Rochester and Austin haven't signed up for all requirements at that time. And I think that's about all I wanted to cover is the main changes to the agreement. You've seen copies of it. It's a lot of legal wording that people like to put in to cover just about everything, but they didn't anticipate that 30-some years from now we'd have some different changes that we didn't consider.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving down to resolution 85-16, to declare costs to be assessed for 2015 sidewalk projects. And this we go to Kyle.
Good evening. I'll cover both resolution 85-16 and 86-16. These are miscellaneous sidewalk repairs that were completed throughout town last year and we'd like to declare the costs of $5,058.4 was the city share, $10,116.8 was the total. So it's 50% property owner and 50% city. So the first resolution is declaring the cost. The second resolution is setting the public hearing for the 18th of October.
Thank you Kyle.
And staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council? This we will deal with 85-16 first to declare the cost. And what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved also. Moving on down to 3.3.4, resolution 87-16, development agreement with Propet. And this order, Troy this time.
Yes. Propet is constructing addition under their current facility in the industrial park. To assist with that project, the city council did approve authorizing tax increment financing to fund a portion of the project to meet the business subsidy law, the city would need to enter into a development agreement with Propet. Under the agreement, Propet must construct the addition and add at least 10 jobs with a base wage of at least $13 an hour over the next two years. There would be some consulting fees in developing the development agreement, which would be paid for by the EDA. And staff would recommend approval of the resolution authorizing signing of the development agreement with Propet.
Thank you Troy. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Moving down to 3.3.5, resolution 88-16, REO Development for Majestic Oaks Subdivision. And this we will go to Kyle.
REO Development, Majestic Oaks, is looking at adding approximately 17 to 20 additional lots. And this agreement covers how that will proceed, how the city will be compensated for our time in observing the construction out there. And it also covers transfer of the existing stormwater pond, which is under their ownership currently. The guidelines we've set up for pond transfer, any pond that serves more than 50 acres should be accepted by the city, or could be accepted by the city, I shouldn't say it, should be accepted by the city. And this one would transfer at 50% or December 31, 2025, whichever occurs first. So there is no budget impact. We expect the reimbursement from REO on this year's construction to be approximately And we recommend approval of the agreement. And we have negotiated this with REO and they're at least have, they're comfortable with it as well.
They've signed the agreement or?
They have not signed the agreement yet. So this would be approving the form of the agreement or the framework of it.
Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
I have a question, not necessarily regarding this agreement, but about the stormwater ponds.
Yes.
This brings up an issue. There are a number of private ponds out there.
Correct.
And do they set to come over to the city when we don't know how that all is going to work?
Well, you know, there's many different situations. Some are located on common space in CIC Platts or Common Interest Communities. Others are on outlots. You know, going forward, we want to have, you know, definition of who's going to be taking over the pond. The developer in this case indicated that the agreement with the city at the time was that the city would take this pond over. We don't have anything in writing to that effect. That's why we kind of came up with the 50% as a compromise. Neither side had anything in writing. And this is from 10 years ago that it all started.
I understand that. That's my concern, there's other ponds out there. I don't know who's taking care of them or inspecting them or...
The privately owned ones, you know, mostly they're being neglected. I can't say that's the case for every, there are some good property owners, but...
Kyle, with this pond, I know there's concern with ponds that we already own, having access to it with our equipment. Is this located such that we'll have no issues with that?
I don't expect any problems. It fronts the county roads so we'll always have access.
Okay. Thank you.
County road anyway.
Any other questions or comments? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Back, any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Moving on down to contracts and agreements, 3.4.1, 2016, 2017, labor contract with MPA Sergeants and MPA Corporals. Chris.
Thank you Les. Staff has been in negotiations and mediation with the sergeants and corporal unit. We have reached a tentative agreement, I'm pleased to say. The agreement is attached here. Just review the essential items of the agreement. There is a 2% general wage increase in the wage scale for 2016 and 2017. We have also proposed a memo of understanding to provide placement for the members so where they are placed on the original new salary structure. And that is similar to what we have done with the non-union where they are placed on the step in the employer's salary structure before it was increased by 2%. That is closest to, but not lower than their base salary as of December 31, 2015. The corporal and sergeant bargaining unit will also receive a step increase under this new salary structure as of September 1, 2016, and June 1, 2017. Another new addition to the contract will be a monthly lump sum of $200 a month. For each full month, an employee is assigned by the police chief to the South Central Drug Investigative Unit. Also an update to the sick leave provisions to make it adding mother-in-law and father-in-law. This makes us up to date in accordance with state law. So in addition, I will point out the non-union employees will also receive one step increase effective September 1, 2016, under the salary structure approved by the council on July 19. Budget impact for the sergeant and corporal contract is $33,550. Budget impact for the non-union step is $36,200. And I recommend approval of both of these, of the contracts for sergeants and corporals.
Thank you Chris. Questions from the council? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okaberg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Thank you very much Chris and we got that completed now.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
And moving on down to miscellaneous, proposed for deer management 2016. And we're back to Chris.
Once again, we are going to be conducting an archery deer hunt in our parks. This is just kind of a reminder for the council of what's going to happen. The only changes we've made is the removal of Mineral Springs Park from our list of parks available for the archers. It's similar to previous years. We've received applications from about 43 hunters this year and we will be conducting that competency test. I believe it's next week, next weekend. So we have to follow all DNR rules and regulations and all the other proposals that are outlined here as we have in previous years. I would recommend approval.
Thank you Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
I'm going to go with Kevin. You had a comment?
I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'll just reiterate what I said this spring. I'm disappointed that we are not going in Mineral Springs Park. Just last week, I had five individuals show me pictures of deer roaming in their neighborhoods and they live along by Mineral Springs Park. We've got Brooktree Golf Course, which is one of the ways, one of the few ways that park and recreation can make money. Deer have been doing damage to the golf course. This wouldn't eradicate them, but it would certainly, I think, assist with that. And I would encourage council next year to reopen that to allowing a deer hunt in Mineral Springs Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg.
Just to follow up on that, we also last spring talked about identifying some other areas that weren't necessarily owned by the city. Did we ever check into that to see if those areas were available or if we could even do it?
You know, I'll have to follow up on that. I don't know if we have or not. Yeah, I don't know.
I'd like to see that done too.
Sure.
There's other areas that are probably more remote that aren't owned by the city that would be good locations.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? I think with this, this is what we will be doing this year, but I do agree that we should be looking at a few of the other locations and revisit Mineral Springs because there is a good population down there to take care of. So with that being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved to continue for this year. This has been approved to continue for this year. Moving down to 3.6.2, three-year strategic plan, 2017 to 2019, and we're back to Chris.
Les, just to clarify, going back to our Resolution 88-16, since we don't have, it's just kind of a clarifying point here to make, that that resolution will be subject to final council approval when REO submits a signed copy.
Okay.
So we don't quite have that here yet.
When we get the signed copy, I think the resolution could be signed, but without the signed copy, it would be premature to sign the resolution. So we'd be, they can sign the resolution once the signed copy is received.
Okay.
Does that create an issue?
Or can it be contingent upon their signature?
Yes. I think that before the resolution is signed, we should have their signed copy of the agreement in hand.
Okay. Okay. Do we need to change anything in our motion?
I think we've clarified it for the minutes that once the agreement is signed and submitted, then it would be appropriate to sign the resolution. I think that what we've, you've approved it in principle, subject to getting that, much as you approve things, subject to receiving receipt of insurance certificates and the like.
Okay.
But we'd really technically need their signed copy before we could have a resolution saying that we have an agreement because we don't really have that yet, so...
Gotcha. Thank you.
We wouldn't have to wait for the next meeting because if we get the signed copy, no other changes having been made, that would be the condition that would be fulfilled.
Right, okay. So, thank you.
Moving on to our strategic plan. As you know, we had had a study session with the council, I think, earlier in the year here. We met along with department heads and staff in March to revise and review and update our plans, both short and long term. We also received some input from our boards and commissions to add to our evaluation. We also reviewed our 10-year facility plan. And we presented the draft strategic plan to the council on September 6. And the result of all of these meetings and study sessions, we had come up with a new key focus area, that being efficient, effective government. And this area is one that addresses the need for government to be innovative, collaborative, and customer-focused. Kind of a new, a new area for us that I think is very important. This new three-year plan for 2017 through 19 sets the course for the, for the city to ensure that the city's vision is accomplished. And our, our key focus areas are infrastructure, economic vitality, quality of life, and the new one, efficient, effective government. This allows the staff and department heads to, to work towards the vision that the council has established. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you Chris. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Jeff Okaberg. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on this?
I think this is fantastic. I've always been a big one for planning, and I think we've come a long ways in the last few years, putting good, workable plans together. We're not there yet, but we're getting closer. And this is a good step, and I'm glad to see everybody getting on board to do it.
That's correct. I agree with that. But with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved, and thank you very much for you and the staff to get it to this point. Now moving on down to 3.6.3, flood grant, demolition quote for 1040 North Elm, 433 Mineral Springs Road, and 542 Maple Drive. And this will go to Troy.
Troy. Yep. So the city has purchased the property at 1040 North Elm and at 433 Mineral Springs Road. Those were purchased under the DNR flood grant, removal grant. All the costs to purchase and remove those properties are all covered by the grant. We also had a property at 542, had the house removed from that property. The utilities still need to be disconnected, so we did roll that into the quotes for demolition or removal of the properties. We did send out that invitation to five different contractors that have performed demolition work or have shown interest in doing work. On August 23rd, we sent those out, received them back September 19th. All the work is to be completed by November 11th. And then I think you were given a printout of the quotes that we got. We did receive three quotes from Wentzill Construction, JJD Companies, and Rocon, with a low, low quote from Wentzill Construction for $36,500. Again, the removal of the two properties is covered by the DNR grant. The disconnection of the utilities on Maple Drive will come out of the general fund. And staff is recommending the low bid from Wentzill Construction for $36,500.
Thank you Troy. Questions from the council? Motion to approve. We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion?
Do I do? A question with regards, when we send these out for bid, we send them out as a package bid, but we do want them itemized separately?
Yeah, so...
For those?
Yep, so we actually get quotes. We don't go through a formal bid process because it's not required for the amount it's for. And so we put specifications together of what we're asking for on each of the properties, and we get bids for each of the three. And so that, we need that for the grants, what specifically it costs to remove those properties. That's all part of our documentation for the grants. So it is all broken out. And then collectively, we try to group as many as we can together to get the best bid. And that way, each, each of the projects end up, end up a little bit less when we do that.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Moving down to 3.64, purchase property at 215 East Pearl Street. And back to Troy.
So the City Council did have some discussion in our last study session about purchasing the property at 215 East Pearl for a future parking lot for the Law Enforcement Center. Property previously had a house on it that had burned down and had been demolished. There's currently a garage and a shed on the property. It's within an R6 high-density residential district. There is potential for needing more space and parking for the Law Enforcement Center. And it was agreed that purchasing the lot now would provide that potential expansion sometime in the future. If it's not needed, we can always sell the property at a later date. The city does have a purchase agreement on the property contingent on City Council approval with a purchase price of $20,000. The plan would be to remove the garage and shed from the property and leave it as open space until a parking lot is needed. Expenses for the purchase of the property and demolition of the garage would be covered by the police department's operating budget. And there are sufficient funds due to the cost savings from the turnover of patrols throughout the year. And staff would recommend, recommend approval of purchase of the lot at 215 East Pearl.
Thank you Troy. Questions from the council?
I have a quick one. Was this property inspected as far as hazardous waste is concerned? Because I know they just bulldozed most of the stuff into the, into the sub-basement of that home after the fire.
Well, there was a demolition permit taken in. All the foundation and everything was, was taken out according to what's required on demolition.
So for us to put a parking lot in there, we would have to add sediment or, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to put a...
Would we have problems with the neighbors with flooding and things of that nature on that lot by putting a lot there?
Well, we would, any, any hard servicing, you know, we would definitely need to control stormwater, meet our stormwater requirements in doing so. And again, that'll come at a, when we decide, and if we decide to do that, that'll have to go through the same process anybody else would have to. The designs would all have to be approved and, and meet our stormwater requirements. Thank you.
Okay. See, we do have a motion and a second, don't we?
I don't think we do.
Okay. With that, will the chair entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okaberg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. We now move down to public comment, and anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda is permitted to come to the microphone, and we will give you two minutes to speak. Seeing none, we'll go on to council comment, and we will start with Councilmember Burbank.
I think tomorrow's the first official day of fall, so I hope everybody can enjoy it before the white stuff comes.
Thank you. Kevin Rainey?
I have nothing this evening.
Brett Svenby?
I do have one comment. I missed it back on item number 2.2.2, the street closure from October 3rd to the 12th to fix that railroad bridge. Just a question from me, Chris or Kyle, do we have them post signage ahead of time that the road will be closed from October 3rd to 12th since it is a busy street, a lot of traffic?
I did request that they post the week before that it would be closed, because I think the 3rd, the 3rd's a Monday, so that there would be notice up at least a week in advance. That's a, that's a busy area, especially with school back in session, so...
All right, thanks. That's all I had.
With that, would it be a good idea to post it in the paper? Because there's a lot of non-residential traffic in that area.
We certainly could. It would likely be at the city's expense. I didn't request that from, from the railroad.
Sure, if you want, we certainly can.
I'm just thinking that, I know there's a lot of traffic from other people that don't live in that area.
Uh huh. But I believe that it's, the traffic is typically the same people every day.
Yeah.
So the notice being posted a week in advance would...
Cover.
Should cover that.
Okay, okay. Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on to Nate.
Nothing to add.
Jeff?
I'd like to thank the Sergeants and Corporals in settling their contract. It shows leadership on their part, and hopefully we can get the patrol contract signed also. So thank you to them.
Thank you Jeff. Great.
I'm just disappointed with Dave that he's thinking about white stuff already.
I love winter.
I'd like to second that.
Kyle and I already talked before the meeting, we decided there's not going to be snow this winter.
Really?
He's going to buy a snowmobile.
Take care of it. Guaranteed it.
Everything's pretty nice and quiet in Ward 2.
Good, thank you Greg. Tom?
Nothing to add.
Chris?
Just a couple of quick things. If you always wanted to be an election judge, there's still time. On October 6th, there will be some training. You still have an opportunity to serve if you go through this training, and you could be an election judge for our general election in November. So call our, our office, 774-7341, if you're interested in that. On October 9th, I'll point out the fire department's having their open house and chili and wild rice soup feed. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, and I have nothing to add to that. So with that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We adjourn. You heard it, Chris.